Thirty-one. All the July twenty-third Planning Board meeting to order.
Well, you guys have to sign because here is an order here.
Some people.
First on the agenda is the minutes of June twenty-fifth and June twenty-ninth. Mr. Secretary.
I recommend we approve the minutes of June twenty-fifth and July ninth, two thousand nineteen. That's corrected.
Second.
It was moved and seconded, that's corrected, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public comment, anything that anybody wants to say that's not having anything to do with what's on the agenda tonight? Moving on. We have released Cape Club request for lot release. We have not received anything, therefore, there is nothing to do on this item tonight. Public discussion, creation of design standards in conjunction with the Thalmud zoning bylaw. I don't know, I know you two and Jim have read it. John, have you read this?
I've looked it over, I haven't read it completely, no.
Okay, and I just started reading it today and Paul has not.
How is that?
And I think that we need to make, we need to wait until the thirteenth and make sure that all of us have thoroughly read it. And I have some thoughts on reading the little bit I did that I think I'd like all of you to contemplate. And that is, when you're looking at a lot of the things in here, when they're talking about setbacks and wider sidewalks and jogged, larger buildings, I think we all have to contemplate that this is an added expense to the developer. Yet, there will be absolutely no force in adopting this. This is also the kind of thing that we're looking at with form-based code.
You said there will be no want in adopting?
Force. We don't have, unless we can translate and want to translate some of what's in here as zoning bylaws, to change some of the zoning bylaws, we, this is guideline only for when we see things as a site plan review. And we don't have any, we can't compel things to happen. Jim?
I think we can. And that's where I think why we have been successful in what we have done. I honestly believe that our, our focus such as Davis Straits and our long-term planning creates a vision that we're working on and things that we do support that vision. So, we could actually refer things to the Cape Cod Commission if they're not going along with our vision. I think the Cape Cod Commission would back us up. I think that's why our design review has gotten, the ones we've done have been in areas where we have long-term planning going on about how we would like Davis Straits to look and our main streets. And so, I'm not, I know we've been told in the past, oh, we can't do this, we can't do that, we don't have the right to regulate solar, we don't have the right to do anything. But I think that the Cape Cod Commission takes a look at our comprehensive plan, our vision and lung. And if we're, and if we're doing things that fall in line with that, I think we have more strength there than just saying we don't have any teeth.
Well, I think we need to get that defined because we've had developers come in front of us saying, no, it'll be too expensive, I can't do it.
But we can always refer them, is my point.
Charlotte?
I'm in favor of us having design guidelines that have some force to them. Otherwise...
Why bother?
Why bother? Yeah. So, that's, that's my position. But I'd, I'd really like to ask Jim and others for an opinion on a way, and you, Pat, on a way forward. Because it's my understanding that in deciding that we really like these Cape Cod Commission guidelines because they are so much in line with what we've been talking about and thinking about, and we were going to adopt them as guidelines, as you say, regulatory, not bylaws. But we are foreseeing working our way to bylaws for form-based zoning. And those will be enforceable in the areas that are designated at that time. So that this is, to me, I thought what we were doing is a step along the way. And this is going to help us really become familiar with them and learn them, be, have a, a common language that we can share in talking about all the aspects of design brought here. And yes, they won't be enforceable in that sense, but you can certainly hang them up on them. But there, but we are working our way toward enforceable, form-based bylaws.
I, I agree with everything you've said there, Charlotte. I just would like to know along the way because we have asked some developers to do things and they say, nope.
I think developers are a very important part of the community, they add to the community. They're not the whole community. There's other parts of the community than in fact we're more responsible to than we are to developers. So, I don't see that as being your strongest possible argument, but I'm not going to help you make a stronger argument. But, but I wonder if Jim sees it the same way as a step along the way.
What I see is the successes we have had. I, I see CVS as being a really big move. Well, this is the first time we stepped up and they were told, oh, no, you don't get to do the design review. And then we asked, okay, well, where's the comments from the design review committee? And we found out that they really didn't have any. And when that happened, design review came back to us. I think we, I think we just keep playing it and if we start losing and we're losing appeals, then I'd say, but I don't want to give up until somebody takes us down. I think, I think we're out ahead, I think we just keep going.
The, the point of my saying, let's all make sure that we've read this.
Right. If you haven't read it, you shouldn't vote for it.
So, let's all make sure we've totally read it.
Let's vote our way.
And that, and that we have a good understanding of what's in here and then bring these questions up for discussion and see how and if we want to proceed on anything.
These would not replace our, our bylaws now for setbacks or any other part of our bylaws.
If you look at this, there are an awful lot of examples in here of Thalmud, used in here of Thalmud. And it also, I can see why they liked our local comprehensive plan.
Yeah, absolutely. Our local comprehensive plan runs right through that whole thing.
Right.
That's what I see when I read it. I think that is our local comprehensive plan coming back at us from the Cape Cod Commission.
So, if we, if we adopt this, we do have this, the design part of it, we do have our local comprehensive plan. So, there is force in that. But if you don't have a bylaw that's legally, has legal standing, I'm not sure where we go. And that's what I'm asking you to think about and comment on.
Can't we incorporate that into the LCP so that that becomes part and parcel of site review? I mean, there are many towns that have design review boards and what the design review board, and they're separate from planning. But if we are going to incorporate it, then it should become part and parcel of everything else we do. Or there really is no point. If somebody can say, I don't really feel like doing that, and you can't make me. Then, you know, I don't want to spend a lot of time doing something that is for nothing.
Well, this would become, we could incorporate it, incorporate it by changing two forty dash one ninety-five C and adding this as a point in it that we have to do, I think.
I, I think that's exactly correct.
Because that gives it some force.
Exactly.
Jim?
Only, just because, you know, town meetings, two-thirds by law, we got a lot of votes, I'm not, I agree with you. But I'd like to position we're in, that, okay, you don't like it, go to the Cape Cod Commission and come back.
We could still do that.
We can do that right now. So, I just, I'm a little bit hesitant when you say, oh, it doesn't have any teeth, we can't do anything about it. I believe we have teeth.
I saw this on the web.
Jesus, excuse me.
Someone's on the way, Jim.
My phone's talking to me. It heard me talking too much, I shut off.
So, I think we need to, to...
Well, let's talk about it.
Yeah, next time, and Grant next time has a five-minute presentation that he wants to give also.
Next time?
Yeah, on the thirteenth. That will, I hope, add to our discussion.
I thought that was tonight.
No.
Joey?
Because we hadn't brought this up yet, and I think it will be more valuable for our discussion if he presents right before our full-blown discussion on this. And then we incorporate that as part of our discussion.
Do you think it's not going to be memorable?
I don't know. But I'd like to have it more present because we've got two weeks' space between. So, and besides, he gave us the information that if you want to, you can look it up too and preview it yourself.
Aye.
John, any comments on?
I'll reserve for the thirteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we will do that on the thirteenth. Okay. Public discussion, applicant John Banner, site plan review application to construct a new detached garage, one car, with an accessory apartment above at seven Toledo Street, Stephen Doyle and Associates. And I think you will all remember that we really liked his plan, but he couldn't do it until the change in town meeting.
That's right, thank you.
So, I'm glad to see you back.
So, I am back. This is reapplying for an accessory apartment on top of a detached garage. So, I did apply on the twentieth of November, but I was told the week before, I think, town meeting had passed a legislation saying you needed to have minimum seventy-five hundred square feet. And at this April town meeting, it was decided and voted on to lower to seven thousand square feet, provided the house is connected to the sewer. My house, as of the end of last month, is connected to the sewer, so I meet that requirement. I think you've all seen this before, this is the site plan, the existing house is here. That's the garage, the new proposed garage. That's right over where the septic tank was, which has now been filled in and crushed. This is the existing house. And it's going to be there on the left, right at the top of the driveway. That's what it looks like with the apartment on top. That's a shot of the interior, small bathroom, kitchen, cooking facility, sink. And that's just another shot. So, once constructed, the lot coverage will be twenty-four point eight percent. Once I remove, there's a shed on the lot currently, but I remove the shed and some back stairs. It meets all the requirements of accessory apartment bylaw. It's located in zoning District RC, so the accessory apartment will give me a total of four bedrooms. The percent area of total floor area of the accessory apartment in relation to total floor area of the principal dwelling is twenty percent. And the project has an approved determination of applicability from CONCOM. And I'm scheduled to, for zoning review on the first of August. Any questions?
Anybody have it? Jim?
Just a comment, thank you for your perseverance. This is, from the first time we saw this, we liked it. It was just trying to hard to fit it in. And I think this is a, I know when we were working on this bylaw, this is exactly what we envisioned. And I'm sorry you had to go through so much.
Oh, we had to do, yeah, I had to go through an extra hoop, but that's all right. We did get it changed.
In the long run, this will become a model for other people in the neighborhood that want to do the same thing. And it's all done and they can, hopefully they have the same quality graphics and measurements and presentation that you have because it's been phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as you all know, we, we don't vote in it, we have to have a decision in front of us to vote it. And we don't have a decision tonight.
Yeah, you should have a decision in your packet.
There was a decision, and we were emailed it, sorry. Yes, we were.
Slip that one in. And notices? Paul, where were you?
Oh, I'm sorry, it was, it separated, so...
So, you don't have to, you don't have to vote if you don't feel comfortable, obviously. But, you know, we did cook up a decision for you guys to review since you did review this plan previously. And we kind of finalized the square footage measurements of the primary residence. John provided us some finished measurements on exterior walls of the second floor. And, you know, we based the measurement, in your staff report, we do have the square footage for if you did look at it as a three-quarter gambrel because it does have shed dormers, or if you looked at it as a finished half-story at seventy-five percent. So, it's well within the requirements.
It makes it any way you look at it.
It's well within the requirements, so...
So, what is the Druthers of the Board on this one?
I'd like to move that we act on it today. I think that his patience has been phenomenal, but there's no point pushing it.
Well, the fact that we've seen it before.
I think we've seen this four times.
Yeah, so, so, okay, who would like to?
I move.
Well, no, you've got to read it.
Oh, we got to read it? I waved the reading list.
Oh, poor Jim, no.
I'll read it, I'll read it. Yes, I'll read it.
Got it in there.
I don't, do you have it ready? Can I read it out to us?
Then I want it back.
I'm, I have to be careful. Motion, the Planning Board votes to approve the application of John L. Banner III under Article XXX thirty, and we'll just go to thirty-nine. Site plan review, the zoning bylaws for planned, entitled plot plan for seven Toledo Street, Thalmud. Assesses map ninety-three A twenty-two zero 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 four by, prepared by Stephen Doyle Associates. Date is September fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, revised May twentieth, two thousand nineteen, scale one-twenty, along with floor plans, elevations, and detached pair, plans prepared by Longfellow Design and Build September eighteenth with the following findings and conditions. The applicant, John Banner III, seeks to construct a studio apartment within a one-car detached garage located at seven Toledo Street, which contains an existing single-family residence. The parcel is zone RC residential, containing seven thousand two hundred square feet of land. The proposed studio apartment is within, the garage is two hundred and sixty-nine square feet. The primary residence is sixteen eighty, the, contains three bedrooms with one proposed for the apartment. The proposed percentage of the total floor area of the apartment is sixteen percent of the total finished floor area of the principal structure. The wastewater division referral dated June twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, indicates that the subject parcel is located in the Little Pond Sewer Service area. The flow neutral by allows the increase in the number of bedrooms on a single-family residence in the sewer service by, by right up to four. The building has actually connected, it says hasn't, but we just heard it has, that, that has changed. Has connected to the sewer system. The connection permit was submitted. The accessory apartment would need to be connected to the sewer, and now we know it is. The modification of the permit will require approval from the wastewater division. That's done. The applicant's attention is directed to the water department's referral dated June eighteenth, two thousand nineteen, with each occupied structure on the parcel must have its own separate water service per utility regulations. The referral indicates that the separate submittal for the water service to the water department requires a review and approval. The plan showing the separate water service needs to be shown on the plan. The applicant needs to apply for a new water service at, at, at four sixteen Gifford Street and pay the applicable fees, which is fifteen hundred and two hundred and seventy-five dollars. I do it all the time.
That's not part of the motion.
I'm sorry, but I'm referring to what the fees are.
Thank you.
I just wanted, want the applicant to know. It said the fees, I just happen to know what they are. The Planning Board's review does not include the building code review, and the Board defers to the, the Building Commissioner on related issues to building code. The Planning Board considers the above reference referrals and the applicant's response to the plans, planned revisions, and its decision in this matter. The Board will, will condition the decision accordingly. That's a long one. Findings, only one accessory apartment shall be allowed per lot on the above reference application. The plans comply with this requirement. The lot size should be no less than seventy-five hundred square feet, seven thousand on the sewer. The lot contains seventy-two hundred square feet, therefore complies with the requirement. Either the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months and every calendar year, or owned by a nonprofit organization, government authority, whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. The Board will condition its decision accordingly. Either the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment may be rented, but not during the five months owner-occupant may not be absent. The, the rental period shall be no less than six months, and the weekly, monthly rentals, summer rentals, so-called, are expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor the, the apartment shall be used as commercial accommodations at any time. And the Board will consider this decision accordingly. The accessory apartment shall have no more than two bedrooms and a maximum of eight hundred square feet of floor area, or forty percent of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. As measured using the exterior side of the first floor outside walls, plus the following finished access, access area space, fifty percent of the floor area, fifty percent or of the finished area, seventy-five percent of the floor area for a three-quarter story building, and ninety percent for a gambrel. The second floor colonial is a hundred percent. The first floor and the third floor are a hundred percent. The above reference plan complies with all of these requirements. The footprint of the detached accessory dwelling cannot exceed that of the principal dwelling. The above reference plan complies with this requirement. An existing dwelling in excess of four bedrooms may convert two of the existing bedrooms into one accessory unit. The above reference plan complies with this requirement. Four bedrooms are allowed by right. The total number of bedrooms shall not exceed four when it, when it contains less than twenty thousand, when a lot, with a lot less than twenty thousand square feet. The above reference plan complies with this requirement. The proposed accessory apartment is in the MEP Little Pond Coastal Overlay District. The total number of bedrooms shall not exceed one per ten thousand square feet unless both the principal dwelling and the accessory apartment are connected to the municipal sewer in or an onsite septic system enhanced nitrogen removal approved by the Board of Health. The accessory apartment will connect to the municipal sewer system. The property residence has three, three bedrooms with a fourth bedroom added in the two thousand seven hundred square foot, well, that's, I jumped the wrong page there, two?
No, that's right.
Okay. For the Coast upon Overly District. Owners of the property in the Coast upon Overly District that want to increase the number of bedrooms beyond the density outlined in subsection three I can only do so provided that both the principal dwelling and the accessory apartment are connected to municipal sewer system and only to the extent allowed within the applicable sewer district bylaw or regulation. An onsite septic system with enhanced nitrogen removal approved by the Board of Health is installed in the property. The proposed project will be on the sewer and we will not be increasing density as outlined in subsection I three I. The Board finds that the architectural effect of the structural, of the structure is incidental to a single-family residence and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The application for the plan shall include information containing subsection two forty, one ninety-five C unless waived by the Planning Board. The Board finds that this information provided is satisfactory in order to make this, this decision. Conditions, the plan shall be constructed and approved, as, as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the Planning Board to determine if the modification of this decision is necessary pursuant to two forty, one eighty-three B of the zoning bylaw. No permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the Planning Board is satisfied that these conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met. Either the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment must be owner-occupied for a period of seven months and every calendar year, or owned by a nonprofit organization, the government or government authority whose purpose is to provide affordable housing. An affidavit shall be submitted annually to the Building Commissioner, signed by the property owner, attesting to that the principal dwelling or the accessory apartment have been owner-occupied for a period of seven months and not otherwise rented as set forth above. Either the dwelling or the accessory apartment may be rented, but not both during the five months that the owner-occupant may be absent. The rental period shall be no less than six months, and the weekly, monthly rental, summer rental, so-called, shall be expressly prohibited. Neither the principal dwelling nor the accessory apartment shall be used for commercial accommodations. I have to say that that's quite redone, that I read the same things twice, and I hope the next time we can take half that out because it should be cut in half. Because I actually read the same things twice, and I just think it's unnecessary.
So, is there a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Under findings in the second paragraph, I think, since we're voting on this, that we should amend this. The third sentence that starts toward the end where it says the building has, hasn't actually connected, I think that first sentence should be removed. And the next sentence, the accessory apartment is connected to the sewer and a sewer connection modification permit will be required from the wastewater division.
I don't have mine in front of me, Jim has it, so...
I took it. But that's what, that's what it is anyways.
To just clean up the fact that it's already connected.
Right. Because otherwise, we're voting on something that says Mr. Banner has to go and have it connected.
It already is though, so he's complied with it.
Right, but I think what we're voting on needs to say that.
There's a picture of the connection, that's the electrical for the pump, that little box there. That proves it.
John?
The house is, is connected, but the accessory apartment hasn't been built yet.
Yet.
So, there has to be language that covers both.
Well, this is just, the wastewater division referral dated June twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, indicated the subject parcel is located in the Little Pond Sewer Service area. The flow-neutral bylaw allows an increase blah, 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 blah. Then it says the building hasn't actually connected to the sewer yet. Doesn't say which building, just says the building. Permit was submitted. The accessory apartment would need to be connected to the sewer and sewer connection modification permit will be required. So, the accessory apartment, so this second sentence, the accessory apartment would need to be connected to the sewer. That could stand as is because that is not yet connected, correct?
Right, there's a, there's a tie-in for it. When we, when we put in the sewer connection, we put in a tie-in for the accessory apartment. But it's not built yet, so it's not there.
So, I think all of that really should stand the way it is.
It just needs to have one sentence corrected. And that, that sentence is, the building has been connected to the sewer system. That's all it has to say.
I think when they wrote that, I think why it's confusing, when they wrote that letter, we'd put in the permit application, but he didn't actually, the work wasn't done yet.
Right.
That's why they wrote it that way.
Just changing one sentence from a future tense to...
So, the first one, the, the building has been connected to the sewer. You're talking about this first.
Has been connected to the sewer, period.
Right.
We can just clarify when we revise this tomorrow that the primary residence has, is, is already connected to the sewer.
Right.
And the accessory apartment would need to be connected when it's built.
Jim corrected it when he read it.
Yeah.
Sort of, it's not really... So, we're, so, so we want the correction made when it's, before it's submitted as a decision.
Right.
And we're voting to have that also as incorporated.
Exactly.
Okay. So, and the other thing, I'm sorry, but there was a publication, published notice too, that was there.
For the record, the, the public meeting notice was indicated in Thalmud Planning, Thalmud Enterprise on July fifth, two thousand nineteen, and Ada Butters were notified by regular mail.
Thank you. So, it has been moved, it has been seconded, and everybody's in agreement that Cory will clean up the language to make it absolutely clear.
Seconded as amended.
Seconded as, well, we didn't actually say amended, but we need to have it cleaned.
Corrected as corrected.
As corrected. We need to have it cleaned up so that the meaning is clear.
We're going to keep this guy going for another day.
Is there, are there any other comments?
I just want to make two comments. I think that's administrative matter, they can be, we can vote on it administratively, they can care in the office.
That's right.
And the other thing is, I think Jim's got a point there. There's a number of redundancies in here that next time we should look at eliminating some of those redundancies because it's making it longer than it really has to be.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Thank you once again for your patience.
I mean, you, you guys, you know, you could essentially agree to vote on a motion and not have to read through the whole decision. At some point, if you guys like the process of reading through an entire motion, then that's fine. But you can vote on a motion and if you condition it, state the conditions, but not have to go through all the findings, so...
May I comment on that?
Of course.
That would be a big improvement in our procedure, big improvement. So that we just say that this should be entered into the record, the approval... So that we just say that this should be entered into the record, the approval of the following conditions, that's it.
Correct, it would cut down tremendously on time.
There's really no reason to have to read through the entire.
None.
So what you're saying is that we do the motion, we skip the findings, go directly to the conditions.
Exactly.
And say that all of the findings will be incorporated.
Yes.
So the board likes that shortening of it. Any opposition to it, John?
I would say for the reading of it, that's fine, but when it's recorded, the findings have to be included.
That's why we have to make that statement, that all of the findings, though we're skipping over them, would have to be incorporated as, and that statement must be made so that we are actually voting it in that manner, I think.
Agreed.
Okay. Want to start tonight?
Yeah, let's...
Yes. Let's practice.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you for your perseverance.
Okay, now we've got planning, we've got planning board decision. Applicant, Nathan Smith, uh, Swain, I'm sorry, site plan review application to construct an addition to the garage for an accessory apartment at twenty-six Viber Lane, Warwick Associates. And we do have a draft decision. Who would like to read it or is there anything else we need to, to know? Cory, do we need to have an additional presentation on this?
Want me to make the motion?
Yes, definitely, because he did revise his site plan and remove the addition to the garage. So present, you know, I haven't been here the last few meetings, so...
So, yeah, Nathan Swain, this is Carolyn and William Swain's property at twenty-six Viber Lane. And after our last meeting, by shrinking the primary dwelling, we're just gonna use the existing garage and convert that to a, an accessory apartment. And that's the, the improved site plan.
Okay.
Which doesn't change.
And the figures that we have in here, Cory, have been proofed, is that correct this time?
Yeah, me, Tom, Jim went through the figures and adjusted them and they're reflected in the decision.
Okay, anybody have any comments, questions of Mr. Swain before we...
I just can explain a couple things. The, there's an enclosed, the, there's an enclosed porch that's now become part of the house. That's why the numbers weren't matching up before and so there was, that, that adds a couple of hundred square feet, but it's there. And there's a finished third floor, floor that was not on any records before and that's there. So that's why, that's why the house got bigger, it is bigger, but the plans didn't show it. But it all reconciled out and it's perfect, it came out just fine.
Okay, great. Who would like to read? Go ahead, Charlotte.
Okay, we have a motion here that the planning board votes to approve the application of Nathan Swain under Article thirty-nine, site plan review as submitted. There are several findings that were reviewed on different occasions. I'd like to just make note of the special conditions. Three of the conditions are standard, the plan shall be constructed as approved. The principal dwelling must be owner, or the accessory must be owner occupied for a period of seven months in every calendar year. And the principal dwelling or accessory apartment may be rented but not both during certain periods. There's one special condition that is not standard, that's the fourth. The roof of the modified building housing the accessory apartment shall connect the guttered downspouts to a rain garden, dry well, or other stormwater measure. And this, the motion in its entirety would be entered into the record. And a fifth one, thank you. The applicant shall maintain three-bedroom maximum in the primary residence with one bedroom and the detached accessory apartment for a total of four bedrooms on the property. That the entire motion would be entered into the record.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'd be curious now, having this much abbreviated and having heard it for the first time, is there any? Just quiet with that, shortening it.
I love it, that's fine.
It saves a long period of...
I just wanna make sure because we do have a listening audience too.
It's true.
So...
I make a motion, Charlotte, read all the motions.
Okay, it's been moved and, did I have a second?
I did.
You did, okay. Any further comments or discussion on this decision? Cory, you're fine, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one, applicant, seven ninety-seven Main Street LLC, site plan review, application to construct a mixed-use structure with a twenty-seven hundred plus or minus square foot restaurant on the first floor and three residential units above located at seven ninety-seven Main Street. And they still do not have what they need in terms of the paperwork. And so they have submitted a request that we must vote on. On behalf of seven ninety-seven Main Street LLC applicant, please consider this letter as a formal request to extend planning board decision deadline to August thirty-first, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion on this? There's been some concern that we, that means we won't do anything until that date. But if we get things in sooner in a timely manner, we can of course move on it. So all in favor?
Aye.
Pat, before, before we go forward, on the first two that came before us tonight, Mr. Banners and Mr. Swains, between the two of them, but more Mr. Banners, we have now a standard way of measuring square footage because there was much discussion of it before. And now apparently it's been determined that it will definitely be exterior measurements on the different floors and they will be corroborated by the planning department before they get here.
Yep.
But that's a step forward, that's good.
I think it is, yes. We're getting to a...
And we've incorporated the measurement for the second and third floors based on the design of the roof.
Right.
And that's in the bylaw.
Yep.
It's our measurement system.
Yes, no one else's.
No one else's.
It's ours.
It's ours.
That we voted on, okay. Next on is six eighty, six eighty-nine Gifford Street Site Plan Review Release. And as you will recall, there were problems with the plan not having built as it had been approved, I think maybe two previous iterations, and so engineering had a great deal of difficulty. The engineering report is behind the draft decision and they have, my understanding is absolutely nothing else outstanding. If you wanna take a minute to look at this further or not, or we can have the motion read.
Well, it, it's up to you guys. We just got the revised site plan and it's been vetted by engineering and they're good with it. We've, you've already voted the decision, but it did, your, your decision was conditioned based on Mr. Rogers providing a revised site plan by November, which didn't happen. So we have a revised plan for you to, to review. And also, we have, we've revised the draft decision to reflect that plan. Ms. Rogers just showed up, he might, he might wanna...
We're moving fast.
That's fine, we're moving fast. I, I don't know if you guys had a chance to review engineering, reviewed the site plan initially, the first iteration. There are some issues with lot coverage calculation based on the handicap ramp. Engineering pointed that out. I talked to Rod, Rod said that would need to be part of the calculation of lot coverage. So Warwick did revise the plan to reflect that. And it just up, upped the lot coverage just a minor percentage. And this site plan's part of a special permit that the planning board approved in two thousand seven. And the approval was for forty-one percent lot coverage because it's over, a special permit from the planning board for lot coverage over forty percent. So it's really just a minor change in percentage with this revised new plan with the addition of the storage building.
My only question was why, why didn't the work get done sooner, what had happened?
In regard to, there was a curb cut.
Excuse me?
In the beginning...
Can, can you grab the mic because people cannot hear you in the listening audience?
How's that, is that? Okay. On the original, before this was built, this entire area along the street here was open. We did not apply for a curb cut. And what I guess was a stipulation at the time, and it just got misplaced or just overlooked. The town wanted a section of that that was used as a driveway off the street. That they wanted the curbing replaced and the blacktop for the sidewalk put in, it didn't get done. So they're asking that it's being done now and I said, fine, I'll, you know, that's not a problem. The other thing was that this area, which is now the driveway, was, we didn't apply for a curb cut. But there was, again, it was an oversight on maybe on the, perhaps the town engineering and so forth because there was no sidewalk or curbing here. It was just open. If you go back to this, it was the old salvage yard. And this entire area across here, oh, probably down to here was just wide open and there's a telephone pole in the middle of it. So people just drove in and out willy-nilly. There was no real designated curb cut. So that, and then they want some changes that are being required regarding the handicap parking and the spaces and the painting to be redone, which is fine. The original building had a loading dock in the back, which the fire department, Mel has voiced some concerns about the larger trucks that they have getting through that area, which would be right in here for them to negotiate around that corner to get out. So, because the way it's, the way it's configured is you come in here and you drive around the building and come out this way. So he had suggested, he had a concern about that and I suggested taking this loading dock right out, which we're gonna do. It doesn't get used, it was a good thought, but it's just not something that it gets used. And that just alleviated that problem and that would open that right up. The, at the time, the, as far as the lot coverage goes, at the time, my architect said to me that the state, under, his, his interpretation was that under the state with the handicap ramps, under the state regulations, that they did not become part of the non-pervious lot coverage. And he, he said, so that doesn't add to your, well, now the, now the jury's out, nobody has a clear answer. I, I tried to get a hold of him today and I could not, I couldn't reach him, he's on vacation. So they're very minor things, there's no major changes here. The area that we're talking about putting the building on, well, has been paved for budget truck parking. So we're not changing any lot coverage in regard to the building. It's, it was just the, once the town engineer went out, he wanted it, he wanted a new as-built. There were some areas that we showed as being open and gravel that had been paved. Just a small area right along this edge right here. We, we had showed that as being stone on the previous site plan and it was not. So he just wanted it designated as it actually was. And that was, so there's no real changes to anything. And then, you know, I've agreed to, that you put stipulations regarding that the list of things that the planning board is requiring or the engineering is requiring, that, you know, they have to be completed in order for me to get my certificate of occupancy for the new building.
Is that, yeah, Jim?
But you are, you already have a certificate, you're occupying the building now, right?
We are in, yes, well, we opened this, the major, the larger building in two thousand ten, in July of twenty-ten.
What to, what certificate of occupancy are you referring to?
On the new building. The new...
Building out back, okay.
Which is where that area, it's a seventy by seventy parking area that's paved. So we're doing away with that parking area and putting a building near the same size. So these, these, they're small requirements, you know, taking care of the curb cut and redoing the lines and things like that, it's not, you know, not an issue. I've contracted with Lawrence and Lynch to take care of the curvings and they'll do that.
So the new building is a three-story building?
It is, it's two stories above ground. The first floor is actually a basement. So it'll have an elevator that will carry three floors and then it has a stairwell in the back inside the building as an emergency exit and so forth.
Paul?
Yeah, we spent a lot of time looking at this previously and my recollection was there were just some relatively minor issues with the engineering department and they've been satisfied with this report. So I suggest we just move on to the, to the motion.
Yeah, because I, I noticed that the comments that needed to be included in any approval have been included in the decision. Any other questions? Okay, John, you wanna read the...
I think Charlotte should read it.
This one cannot be abbreviated, come on.
Really?
Really.
Do you wanna read the whole findings also or just the conditions? I think the conditions need to be read.
Well, you can do what you wanna do on it.
I'll read the whole thing if you want.
This is different from the standard that we keep doing on the accessory. That's why I have a little concern with it, but...
Just for a moment, if we could discuss a process question?
Yeah.
Just read.
I think our change wasn't about just the accessory apartments, our change was about all the motions, most of which contain information that can't be taken in quickly when you only hear it, you have to really read it. So the concern about people at home, I, I don't think it applies particularly. If they wanna know, if they really wanna know what has, what the motion is, they're going to have to see it on paper and check it and they're all available within the planning department because they're all fully put on record. So I don't think reading it really helps people's comprehension, it just really...
That's true, but the difference is that in the others, we have all of these things that are part of that bylaw and then they're replicated under the findings.
Almost everything we find is covered by a bylaw.
Not in this case, we... It's quite, this is quite different.
I mean, not to read.
Just read it and get over with.
Chair, I mean, this is, this is a new idea, we, we don't have to rush into it, I mean, in terms of the, the reading of decisions. So if you wanna work out a, a better process, then that's fine. If you wanna work out how to, how to read the motion and then, then talk about including findings and conditions, then you don't have to, we don't have to do it right away, obviously. But if, that's completely up to you guys. If you feel comfortable voting the motion without the findings tonight for this particular decision, then you just read it in, in its entirety.
Well, the findings here in this instance recapitulate the history of the approval process that we've been through to get to this point.
Correct.
So that it's a description of an approval process. It's finding that it was an expansion of the storage units to supply on a truck rental business. It describes the parcel that we're looking at on paper here. It talks about the different steps that have, we have gone through in the meantime to get to where we are now. And it says that it's within the Water Resources Protection District. I mean, these, and it talks about Falmouth Engineering having addressed some concerns. It's a history of the processes that have been gone through in order to approve this smaller building at the back of the lot rather than actual findings that are going to compel the owner to do something new and different. Just recapitulates the history. Whereas the conditions, two of the conditions, that the plan shall be constructed as approved and it goes on with the rest of that, standard language, and the second, that they have to submit an as-built plan once the construction is complete, which is our new requirement, but is now also a standard requirement. Those two are a standard.
Well...
Number three and number four... Number three and number four are not. So the chances are it'd be good to read those out loud, but not to read the history of the process, just to name the motion and the, the new requirements. We'll cover it.
I don't think this is the standard either.
We have voted for it to be a standard.
Well, no, because it's, it's different. Because it states something like there should be a parking table and lot coverage table included on the as-built. So I mean, I think there are gonna be some things, and I think maybe we just read the conditions.
Yes.
I, I think we're spending more time discussing what we should read than it would take to read it.
That's true, but we're trying to arrive at a new and much expedited way of dealing with all motions, not just accessory apartment motions.
Sometimes expedited is not good. I think in this case, there's no standard on here, and I think the conditions should be read.
How about the findings? You wanna, how many, read the findings too?
I prefer the findings to be read on this too. Because it's, when we have the other with the accessory apartment, we cut out and we put in how it's supposed to be done, and then we reiterate it under the findings. That's the duplicative nature of that, but I don't see that this is duplicative.
I also think there should be something added to an agenda item. So we can make a decision, not like on the fly. We only have this last one to do anyway. Right, and John is just chomping at the bit to read it.
He's chomping at the bit to go home, but, only kidding, only kidding.
No, you're not.
Okay, motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of Jerry E. Rogers under Article thirty-nine, Site Plan Review of the Zoning Bylaw for a plan entitled, quote, "Site Plan Proposed: New Building Prepared for Jerry Rogers, six eighty-nine Gifford Street, Falmouth, Mass.," end of quote. Scale one inch equals thirty feet. Two sheets prepared by Warwick and Associates, Inc., dated June thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, revised July fifteenth, two thousand nineteen, and July twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, with the following findings and conditions. Findings, the applicant Jerry E. Rogers seeks to modify a previous site plan review and special permit decision to expand the storage capacity to the existing eighty thousand square foot self-storage facility located at six eighty-nine Gifford Street, map number thirty-four oh-one zero-zero-three zero-zero-zero, with the addition of a three-story, fourteen thousand seven hundred square foot building, four thousand nine hundred square foot building footprint. This expansion of storage units would supplant the truck rental business currently operating on the site. Both uses will, will not be accommodated on-site. The subject parcel is one hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-two square feet and zone agricultural B, A G B, with the primary land use as a commercial warehouse. The total square footage of the existing building footprint is thirty-eight thousand two hundred eleven square feet or twenty-one point five-four percent lot coverage. The existing paved area is thirty-five thousand one hundred thirty-seven square feet or nineteen point seven-five percent lot coverage, with the existing lot coverage of structure and paving totaling seventy-three thousand three hundred forty-eight square feet or forty-one point two-two percent lot coverage. The proposed building footprint is forty-three thousand two hundred thirty-one square feet or twenty-four point three-zero percent lot coverage. The proposed paved area is twenty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet or sixteen point eight-six percent lot coverage with proposed lot coverage of structure and paving totaling seventy-three thousand two hundred thirty square feet or forty-one point one-six percent lot coverage. The applicant has a Cape Cod Commission Development of Regional Impact Project number CU dash zero-seven-zero-one-two, a limited D R I Determination for Change of Use Decision dated August twentieth, two thousand seven, with minor modifications dated February nineteenth, two thousand eight, and September eighteenth, two thousand twelve. The Cape Cod Commission was consulted, and it was determined that the modification to the project and to the decision was de minimis in nature and required no further action by the commission. The planning board also issued a special permit decision on October seventeenth, two thousand seven, for lot coverage allowed under Section two forty dash sixty-nine D of the Falmouth zoning bylaw. The planning board determined the modification to the project and special permit decision was de minimis in nature and did not require a new public hearing for the modification. The planning board views the removal of the truck rental use along with associated truck storage parking field with a replacement with a storage building as having a positive impact on groundwater discharge. The removal of the truck rental business will also reduce the number of anticipated trips onto and off the site and will not require a traffic study. Falmouth Fire and Rescue Department addressed concerns with the site plan in a referral dated September tenth, two thousand eighteen. Fire and Rescue determined that the loading dock at the rear of the existing structure will inhibit it, will inhibit the turning radii of an emergency apparatus to navigate between the loading dock and the proposed storage building. A note to remove the loading dock has been added to the revised site plan. Fire and Rescue will also require access through the main gate in order to service the new structure and will also require a Knox box on the building for after-hour access. The board will condition its decision accordingly. Falmouth Engineering Division addressed concerns with the site plan in referrals dated September thirteenth, September twenty-eighth, October twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, July eighteenth, and July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Among those concerns were that some of the site plan improvements previously approved by the planning board were not found on the site. Those items identified in the Falmouth Engineering Division's review of the site must be installed prior to a certificate of occupancy for the new storage building. The planning board will condition its decision accordingly. The subject property is located in a Water Resources Protection District and a Great Pond Coastal Ponds overlay. The proposed additional storage building will not affect current waste treatment capacity. The planning board defers to the Board of Health on the regulation of nitrogen loading and the required changes to wastewater disposal system. Conditions, one, the plant shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to two forty dash one eighty-three B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions on this approval and predecessor, predecessor approvals have been met. Two, the applicant must submit to the planning department a certified as-built plan once construction is complete to include at a minimum pavement edges, concrete pads, walkways, and ramps. Buildings with dimensions and setbacks to the property lines and parking space paint lines. Some of this, some of this information has already been collected and is shown on the current plans. The new plan should include this information and the results from the new construction. There should be a parking table and lot coverage table included on the as-built. The applicant must apply for a street opening permit with DPW Engineering to cover unpermitted work, corrected transition curbing, and complete work that was required in the previous site plan review, and submit any required bond prior to issuance of a building permit. The applicant must complete the work as approved in the street opening permit prior to issuance of any certificate of occupancy. A Knox box on the new storage facility for after-hours access must also be provided.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, John.
What is the, the thought about the condition of a bond? Has the structure already been built? The accessory building, is it already built?
The accessory building is not.
No, it's just the pad that's there.
Are you speaking of this proposed building?
Yes, that's when you're gonna be seeking an occupancy permit at some point, right?
At some point, yes.
So it has not been built, just no foundation, there's?
No, we've done broken ground.
Okay. Okay. So I see a condition for a possible bond here. I don't see the need for that if he hasn't built the building yet. Cause he's not gonna get occupancy until he meets all these other conditions. I think that's bond enough.
So cross that out.
That would be my feeling.
Okay.
If the man's gonna spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to put up a building, then he can't occupy it until he.
I agree.
He puts in the.
He's bonded himself.
Puts in the curb cut and all the rest of that.
Right. So we want a modification on this?
No.
I would eliminate the bond portion of this decision.
Period.
I agree.
Do we take, do you wanna make a motion to that effect since?
Make a motion that we, we eliminate the requirement of a bond.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay, now we go back to the original motion? And there's, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
This is a good way to point out how we've changed. This building was built with all kinds of things. And now, would, would, now if their foundation's off by a couple of feet, they don't have the right landscaping, nothing happens. So we've become an awful lot stricter.
Stricter, yes.
And.
Yeah, with that one bylaw.
Yes.
So, okay, planning board discussion, update of administrative approval request for five eighty-seven Main Street. The zoning board of appeals has approved that. And there is a twenty-day appeal period that started clicking at that point. Tom has given, been given administrative approval to, to look at the other things from the site plan, the landscaping, and there are some questions still on that. Engineering has to take another look at that. So Tom believes that within that twenty-day appeal period, all of that should be completed. And he can sign off on it, on the site plan review. So I'm just updating the board on where that stands. Are there any further questions on that?
No.
Okay. We have committee reports. Anybody wants to make a committee report? Pam?
So we're moving ahead on our Affordable Housing Summit. We have all of our speakers. And we just have to finalize the, the type of presentation we're gonna do. But I think it's gonna be good and hopefully very helpful.
What's the date for that summit?
October second.
This year?
I think I'm gonna plan a year from now.
Well, you're a planner. You're on the board.
Okay, not exactly a committee report, but Paul wants to say something about Shiverich Pond.
As you know, Shiverich Pond has been developed over a period of years. And the intent is to come to the fall town meeting with a proposal for CPC funding. So there's been a series of meetings, and last week there was a meeting, and a decision was made that the application would be submitted to CPC by the Conservation Commission with the planning department, not the board. The planning department has the co-applicate. Planning board could not submit an application to the SOF, but the department can work on it. So the, the intent is to prepare a, a proposal to community preservation for consideration by August eighth.
For what?
Now, the, the project had been changed somewhat. We had a meeting. I made a presentation last night to the Board of Selectment, which was very well received, and they supported the application. But there were a number of changes made. The big difference was last spring, we were talking about doing a conceptual design and some vista clearing, and that was it. So the intent was to have a more complete project. This project is a much more complete project, which includes the design and construction of the fishing, of viewing platform, a small park, and vista clearing as well. So a very detailed presentation was made last night and was endorsed by the, by the Board of Selectment. So now the obligation is to put together the application in a time of fashion, submit it. Tom Budd has been named the liaison to the town on this. Unfortunately, he's out, he's on vacation until about the fifth, I think, of, of August. So we're gonna have to work on it in his absence, so.
Anybody have any questions with Paul? Okay.
Thank you.
I think it's fabulous that you're continuing to push for this. It's great.
Well, you know, just as an aside, the interesting thing is we received a letter from the McQuaid Bay Reserve. Every eighth-grade student at Lawrence School goes out in the field and takes samples three times a year. And they've been doing that for twenty-two years. They have enormous amount of information, they have enormous amount of interest. And unfortunately, some of the concerns they have have to do with the safety of taking samples. We started this with the safety of a fishing platform over the outlet. So there's a lot of synergism going on here that makes it a very good project.
Huge. Thanks, Paul. We move on to general correspondence. F C T V, The Future Is Now. Experience the transformation of community media in Falmouth. They're doing a grand opening at the Falmouth Community Media Center on Thursday, July twenty-fifth, four to six P M.
Thursday, July twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, four to six P M.
At F C T V, I saw?
Yeah, mhm. They've got a, a picture of their new digs.
What's the address there?
Jeez, I don't know.
Three twenty Dillingham?
Yeah, three, three-ten Dillingham. Okay. We have a letter dated July twelfth from Mass Development in regard to the Mass Development Real Estate Services Grant Award. We regret to inform you that the town of Falmouth's application for technical assistance through Mass Development Real Estate Services Call for Proposals was not selected to receive funding through the current F Y twenty-twenty round. They had extreme interest in this. They had sixty communities applied, combination of all for grant funds of one point eight million, but they had three hundred and ten thousand dollars to grant. So many highly competitive projects could not be funded, and ultimately, ten projects were selected for the F Y twenty-twenty round. So presumptively, we can go at it again.
So what did, what we were, what were we proposing?
Specifically, I don't know, Corey. What were we specifically proposing for this? It's technical assistance.
Technical assistance for the form-based zoning of Davis Straits. I'm not one hundred percent certain. I wasn't involved in that grant proposal, or, that was Tom. So I'm pretty, I'm a hundred percent sure it was for Davis Straits. I'm not quite sure specifically what it was for. I think it was for.
I think it was for that, yes.
Yeah.
Because we are delayed in our schedule there too. That's one of the reasons. But obviously, they had an incredible number of applicants and.
I think it was to get a consultant to help speed up the process, which now will be further slowed down because Heather Harper's leaving Cape Cod Commission.
That's my concern too.
Maybe we should look to the town for that.
For what?
A consultant to help put together the proposal.
Potentially.
Yeah.
But I understand Heather was already working with Chloe Schaefer, and there's an email from her. Tashton's amended agreement for the D L T A project, which has the zoning portal task removed. Please have two originals signed and mailed back to the commission. And that has to be signed by town administration. Julian Souso has to do it, and then Christie Sanatore for the commission, and Jack Units for the Barnstable County. So all this has to be signed, acknowledging that the zoning portal task was removed. And I'm just putting that back in the folder. It needs work on that. Then we have a hearing notice, Cape Cod Commission Local Comprehensive Plan Regulations, Barnstable County Complex, East Wing Conference Room in Barnstable, July twenty-fifth, three o'clock.
Same time.
I know, same time. They're gonna conduct a public hearing. At this hearing, the Cape Cod Commission will take testimony on whether to amend the Cape Cod Commission on local comprehensive plan regulations by repealing the current version of the Cape Cod Commission Local Comprehensive Plan Regulations and adopting in their. and adopting in their place the draft LCP regulations that were presented to and recommended by the Commission's Committee on Planning and Regulation at its meeting on June twenty-seven, twenty nineteen. Anyone wishing to testify orally to present data, views, or arguments will be welcome to do so. Written comments may also be submitted at the hearing or delivered or mailed to the commission for receipt on or before the date of the hearing. So that's coming up very quickly too. So that's all in the general correspondence. Any future agenda items? We've already gotten one for discussion as to how we want to handle the decisions in any abbreviated form so that we have a pattern of those. Jim?
I would like our town planner to, we, redo our schedule for form-based code based on this decision that just happened and what we need to do and how that impacts us. Because we have an outline of benchmark times, and I think one of those, this is a hiccup in it. And I just wanted to understand what that's going to do to our schedule and if we have to make changes accordingly.
And that's because of all the personnel changes, the?
Every, everything, but in particular, I, I don't know if that funding piece was, was on the critical path or not.
I think it was.
But it, I'm not sure, but I'd just like to hear about it.
I think it was just going to be helpful. It's another, it was another hand on board.
But I want to understand that.
Correct, yeah.
I just want to have him lay that out for us so we understand it. I want to understand the integrity of our schedule.
You're right.
That's all I really care about, whether that impacts it or not. I'm not sure.
Well, because we had gotten a reply, a response from Heather that she thought all the time could be made up, but now Heather's gone too, so.
Let's, let's have him review the schedule again and what we need to do to keep it on track. That's all.
Okay, and anything else that you want to see on a future agenda? Yes?
We haven't yet handed in our suggestions for agenda items for the next joint meeting with the Board of Selectment.
We were discussing them, I thought. At the last meeting, we had a whole list that was put together that we were throwing out.
What's the date for that? Do we have one?
September?
It's in the fall.
I, I think it was like September twenty-fifth or something like that. So, yeah, we were kicking them out, but we might want to consolidate based upon, a lot of them, I think about four or five coalesced around housing.
We ought to clarify it.
And it wasn't all affordable housing, it was housing issues. But when we were throwing those out, that's what was coming up. But, yeah, we need to?
Yeah, just?
More finalize. Okay, suggestions for joint meeting. I'd also throw in just a little suggestion here too. We probably don't want to handle more than two topics because so many of these are going to be naughty that as soon as you get a whole lot of topics that you want to cover, it becomes difficult to cover them adequately.
In a joint meeting?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Right. You want to?
Pick your two or three most important ones and keep it to that.
Exactly. Shouldn't we bring up the things that we're planning to bring to town meeting?
I don't know. Well, what are we planning to bring to town meeting at this point?
Well, we're not sure.
That's the problem, isn't it?
We should look at that.
So? The recodification? No, it's not going to be?
It's not going to be ready.
Heavens, no, it's not going to be ready.
That meeting's tomorrow.
I know. So anything else?
Okay.
And the next meeting is August thirteenth?
August thirteenth.
So, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.